Public comments, Mr. Garcia? Any public comments?
Judge, I've got a couple. We're having a lot of problems at the Alanis Park. We're trying to improve it, make it better. And I guess Thursday or Friday, Monday, I'm sorry, Monday, they had a game. And I don't know if it was children or what, but they took the leaves from our tree, some of the trees, and just threw them off, they broke branches. They're practicing, even though we told them no practice. And I did call Ms. Melina this morning and tell her that I was going to ask you to make a memo and send it to the coaches. If they go in there, we will file trespassing. And on the concrete, where you go to the concession stand, the vehicles are going under and the concrete is starting to break, so I'm going to close it, put it here. They stop, they kind of bring down, they can use a dolly, we'll provide a dolly for them to be in. Because those vehicles are too heavy for that sidewalk. And on the election, you know, when you state it is mandatory, that affects all of us. So all elected officials and all employees need to be present. Because you're making it, well, you're not making it, your, it's mandatory. And if they're not going, employees, come budget time, they're going to start bribing because we're not going to give them the raise they want. And we'll tell them why. Because that's what happened the last time. But this time, we'll be, we're getting prepared. Once budget time comes, you don't get a raise because you don't do your job.
Anything else, Commissioner?
No, ma'am, that's it.
I have two. Yes, Commissioner Dulugava?
We've been working on the parking arena. We did the walking trail and we were fixing the basketball courts. Over the weekend, there were some ATVs that, they broke the whole walking trail. They destroyed the whole walking trail. All the cement on the basketball courts pulled the tires from the ATVs. And I'm like, I tried to do my best that I can with the little money that we get in our budget to fix whatever they need, but I don't understand how they can destroy something that they, they get for themselves to use in arena. So I asked Mr. Picasso to check the cameras to see if he can notify, I mean, at least see who they were.
Who was?
If we find out, all charges. That's the only way we're going to do it because they keep destroying our property and there's no consequences.
Right.
So we need to do something about it.
Anything else, Commissioner?
Judge, I would like to see if we could request a special meeting for an update on the share situation that's going on right now. So we can be willing to, what actions are, what's going on with this case. Due for Friday or Monday.
Any other public comment?
I have one, Judge. We are continuing to experience accidents on the paper and so the amount of traffic is basically triple since the last time we were working out on that road. There's a lot of water flow traffic in the speed, seems to be a major contributor to the accidents. I feel like a lot of these drivers that are coming in are from out of the county enforcement, out of state, some even out of state. And they come into this road, the transition from what's supposed to be 55 miles an hour to 35 miles an hour is something that they cannot handle and they're being speedy and it's causing accidents. Just to let you know.
Thank you. I'm also going to do a public comment. I discussed it briefly with Commissioner Juan Carmona. In regards to, for all the public officials or anyone wanting to, elected officials, excuse me, or anyone wanting to be on the agenda, please be advised that the agenda request is due Monday at noon. Furthermore, reports, any reports from any of the elected officials, that is including constables, the JP's, any elected official, those reports are due Wednesday at noon. I think, Commissioner Carmona, you share the same sentiments with me. When we receive reports, the day of, it's very hard for the commissioners to be able to review them as well as myself. So please be very cognizant and be very aware that agenda requests are due Monday at noon the week before the meeting. And then also that the reports are due Wednesday at noon in order for my staff to be able to prepare these packets for commissioners and myself. So just wanted to make that very clear. Again, going back to the comment, public comment that Mr. Carmona, Juan Carmona stated in regards to the trainings, he's absolutely correct. When we send out these trainings, they are mandatory trainings that applies for all elected officials, that applies for all the employees. We understand the exception of some of the overnight staff that they've been advised already, your overnight deputies or your overnight jailers. However, those meetings are mandatory because we have to meet a certain compliance with some of our tech people. So please make note of that because we all need to be held accountable. Myself, our commissioners, our elected officials. So if we make that effort to be there, we expect everybody else to be there. So this is our job. We get elected to represent our community as an elected official. We have to go to these meetings, to these trainings, to get educated so that we can be able to properly represent the community. So make sure that you attend the meetings when we have those mandatory trainings. That's all I have. If there's not anything else? Yes, ma'am? I also, I want to make a public comment to the elected officials and employees. I've been advised that any PO or invoice must be due no later than Friday. Is that correct, Mr. Pereira?
For next time, yes.
On Fridays?
For next time, right, yes.
On Fridays. So make sure that any elected official or employee that submits a PO or invoice that they're due on Friday. Anything else? I'll go ahead and 1.6, approval of minutes of regular meeting, March 27, 2023. We got a motion by Commissioner Dulugava, second by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 2.1, approval of bond, any bonds, Mr. Garcia? No bonds? No action. 2.2, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from county extension agent. Will ask for someone to motion to have this table. Ms. Cruz is in training. I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dulugava. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. You're fine. You're, you're fine. 2.3, same announcement. It's the monthly report from FCA agent, got someone else for the month of March. Got to say, did advise our office that she is in Kingsville for a training. Motion by Commissioner Urenda, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Adams tabled. 2.4, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from rodeo arena coordinator, Ms. Guadalupe Puente for the month of March 2023.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Puente.
With the month of March, we had a wedding, baby shower, and of course, we had some trainings. And we did have the Ranch Rodeo. And everything went well for the month of March for the arena. Do you have any questions?
Ma'am, okay.
How, how entertain a motion?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Carmona, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dulugava. Any discussion?
I have a question, Judge. Ms. Puente, on the second page, is this, can you explain the second page, please?
The second page for what?
Is that the Bowman or what? Oh, okay.
Yes, it says Jack Bowman in the top.
I'm ahead of you, I thought they were wrong.
No, no.
Okay, I apologize for that.
Of course, at the park, for the walking, we only have one event. And then, of course, for the Bowman, we have three teams that are using the field. And they all pay their fee. Of course, you don't pay a fee for Juan Martinez and René Héctor because they paid in February. And only one of them paid in the month of March.
And how's that working now?
It's, it's working good. Today, there was a little conflict, like little problems of them sharing the field, but with the schedule, they're all following very well. The schedule holds in the law. So we work, I work on that.
Are there any comments?
Yes, Commissioner. Yes.
Any other questions?
Judge, I do also, I need to, miscommunication in regards to the big goals, recreational center, I advise, when they tell them that I said it doesn't count. They have to go through the power of the jail.
Correct.
Not because they say, come here, but one has said I can use it, they're going to use it. You know, I don't have the authority to lend it out. She's the one that's, I explained to the lady, pero, she said, what? He said, you were in charge of the investment? She's still in charge.
Who's in charge of the golf course? Were you in charge of it?
The what?
The golf course?
No, that's Ana Gámez.
There is a report, I haven't seen a report.
I think whenever she, I think when she makes her report, she, it should be included on there. She doesn't have a report this month, I mean, this commission's court.
You have her as a proxy, so come and do the report. A proxy, or should be the one doing the report.
But the concern is that they're using it, post-collecting, right? Is that the concern? Is it they're renting it out?
Ana Gámez.
No, no, no.
Oh. For what?
The one that's supposed to be in charge of all, or anything that is being rented out, also under you, given the golf course. Even this Placita over here, I need to let you know also about that.
Okay, I was not aware of the Placita, but Judge, just share that with me and I would know, but not about the golf course. Ana's been taking care of that, to my knowledge.
I did talk to her, I did have Ms. Puente in my office, and I did talk to her about the Placita because you're absolutely correct, there's the miscommunication in terms of who runs the Placita and who has this money and who has that money and who rented and all that. And so I think for future reference, I think it's something that we need to really discuss and just put in, and I think we briefly discussed it, but putting all parks and recreation under one department and having one person handle all parks and recreation. Because then we have a lot of Indians, or not a lot of chiefs and not a lot of Indians, as they say, because then you're having to go to her, to go to Ana, to go to the comité at the Placita. And so I think it's important that we just collaborate and put everything under one and so that we have one contact person to handle those matters. Because again, like you said, they go to you or sometimes they'll go to Commissioner Dulugava. Because I know that, for instance, with the, with the Bowman, Mr. Martinez, he had told me, he talked to Commissioner, and then you had told me you didn't know about the price or anything. So it's just kind of a lack of communication. And I think if we have one contact person or one point of reference, that we'd be able to solve any issues in regards to, to the, I wasn't here before, so I don't know how you guys separated the departments, but...
Back then, when we hired Ms. Lupe, we gave her the title as it was going to be all, like all parks and recreation that we rent. So that would include the pavilion over here, the Placita, and the golf course. Because now it isn't being rented, it wasn't rented back then. But as soon as it was going to be finished, and we finished it with it, it was going to be up to...
And when I talked to, when I talked to Ms. Puente...
I think it's a lack of communication.
Correct.
I was not aware of the Placita.
And I don't think it's, it's no fault to you, but I know when I did talk to Ms. Puente, and I gave her the benefit of the doubt, and I believed her, she did advise me. Obviously, she was under a different administration, and at that time, she was advised, she was not in charge of the golf course, she was not in charge of the, or the Placita. She was, as a matter of fact, you only thought it was the rodeo arena that she was in charge of. And so I think there was a lack, lack of communication or miscommunication, if you will. So I think that's something we can work on to try to like get all parks and recreation under one umbrella. I know that Commissioner Carmona had suggested having, you know, one, like a park ranger that would be in charge of all the parks to making sure that they're not in there with the four-wheelers. And that would be to go look in Big Wells and go look in Catalina, go look here. And also having one person that's in charge of all parks and wrecks in terms of booking them and whatnot. So that would be inclusive of the golf course as well. And I know Commissioner, you have advised me about having a department of employees that take, handles that. I mean, they would fall in your precinct, but they would be the ones to go and fix any issues that was, that was there. So I think maybe perhaps during budget time, it's something we can look into, making a department specifically for parks and wreck. Because I understand that you guys are busy doing either, you know, road bridge, or you have Metro Commissioner, or you have a lot of things that they have to do. So I think if you have a specific department that's just in charge of parks and wrecks, they can just put all their attention to parks and wreck.
I have a question, just to clarify. I thought it was the Magroso de Maderas Placita. But how did we came to a fire ranger? It was, they were before I came in.
Correct. So my, my distinct understanding, as you, I'm new here, from my distinct understanding, the Placita entails the old part and then the new part, where it's the recreation or the basketball. Correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner, the basketball. So it's both, but they just call it the Placita. And my distinct understanding is that both areas belong to Dimen County. However, there was some agreement prior to my administration that the comité de mujeres, that they could utilize that area for certain events and be exempt from paying that fee that was due. But everything else, I mean, it still belongs to Dimen County. Somehow, there's a miscommunication where if anybody wanted to use it or rent it, they were having to contact Ms. Martinez. But in all actuality, it should be contacting either Ms. Puente or somebody within the county. Is that correct?
Yes. Also, on the Magroso de Maderas, we did agree that they were going to use it in charge para la Placita.
Oh, yes, you did tell me that.
There's a way they maintain the cemetery.
Cemetery.
So I don't have a problem with that, but on the recreational side, it would also be a common.
This is going to create a lot of confusion because the Placita, like you just said, is considered, that block is considered the Placita right now. And it's just going to create, and as far as the golf course, I do want everybody to understand that the golf course is a total different animal than every park. Because it requires knowing the scheduling of personnel, the scheduling of tournaments. Ana is the one that keeps up without that, so you're going to have to be pretty much tied up with her on that. Like when they rent the golf course for a tournament, she's the one that knows whether it's available or not because...
The thing that we were discussing, Commissioner, is not that. The thing we were discussing, like they're going to have a private party or something.
But that's all, that's all in general and scheduling for, because even that, which you're, they're going to have a private party, and Ms. Lupe says, okay, so-and-so's having a private party. And if there's a tournament at the same time, it's going to create a conflict. That's why we don't, we're, we're under the agreement that we don't, we don't rent it out. If there's a, let's just say a corporation of a league.
Right, right, right.
We don't rent out because they utilize everything, it's all in one package. It's going to affect the number of rich. So just that, that's why I'm saying, if the golf course is totally different, if you don't, like the parks, you don't have employees, you don't have scheduling, you don't have none of that. The golf course has its own everything. So it is going to create confusion and conflict eventually. Because Ana's there, she's the one that, I mean, that's why she's there, to, to control that, to know that, monitor that. Whether you want to do that, like I've heard before, I'm just one vote.
I think that most of the thing is that this lady hasn't come up here for whatever issue she's going to have and give a full report. Plus, it's not that Ms. Puente is going to take over. I think the thing is just to find out the collection rate and how clear, that's what it's, that's how I see it.
Were you reading the report?
Well, see, but the lady doesn't come and give a report. I would understand, but I can understand her not being available, but...
I think the last time she wasn't here because her father passed, yeah, her father passed away.
That's why I say, for unforeseen reasons, she hasn't made it, but there's been other times she needs to be here and you speak up on her behalf. But I think what we're doing, just to...
So I just want to clarify, am I going to be responsible for the golf course for when they want to...
Not yet. I think at some point...
Just want to make sure.
I think at some, I think right now, for purposes of, of not disrupting what's going on, because I understand that the golf course is a beast in and of itself because of, they have this revenue and they sell food and whatnot. But I think at some point, we need to come together to decide on a parks and recreational department, if you will. But I think it is important that, you know, we have Ms. Gámez come in and make her, her report so that the court's aware. But for right now...
Just the Placita?
Correct.
Okay, is there a contract for the Placita? And what's the fee? Because I have no idea of that.
There is not. As far as I'm concerned, like I said, when I, when it came to my attention about the Placita, I got different answers. And when I finally talked to Commissioner Juan Carmona, he advised me and clarified and so, but however, there is no contract anywhere, there is no, and as far as I'm concerned, this entire time, people were going to Ms. Martinez to ask for, for permission, essentially, to use the Placita, which in fact, the Placita belongs to Dimen County. And so in reality, she had no authority other than, from, like I said, my understanding was that the authority she had extended to where she could use the non-basketball site for no fee, for Cinco de Mayo, and I think you said those, the flea markets on the weekends, but everything else had, should have gone through Dimen County. And we, we just have to be concise and, and we have to be fair and straight across the board. So I think that's why it's important that we're uniform. And that we all know the one point of reference, who, if somebody needs to rent somebody, they go to you.
Okay, just to clarify, I'm responsible for the Dimen County arena for events?
Correct.
For the Bowman field?
Correct.
Big Wells Recreation Center?
Correct.
The Ashington Recreation Center? The Joaquin Salado Park, Pavilion and Cazebo? And the Placita?
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure. The Pavilion and the Cazebo?
Oh, and what?
At the park. We have them two separate. The Pavilion is where they have the basketball without the stage, and then, of course, the Cazebo is the one they just built.
I thought that, I mean, Medina, where the problem, only if you were responsible for the orders, you'd speak them up?
No, I am not responsible for the court. Am I not responsible to do the scheduling for events?
Let's see, I think that's where, that's where we need to, to really, because then we run, if we really go parks and recreation, she's really not in charge of all the parks and recreation, because then we have Melissa Medina who's in charge of the Alanis. And then she, and I've been there where Ms. Puente has gotten angry people because they think it's her. But, so I think that's why we need to have just one.
We can transfer Alanis to her, but we can't all get Alifa Park?
I think we can discuss that and see if...
That would eliminate one more person from the evening.
I think the issue for me is, and I speak for myself, is that we can give her all those, all those duties and obligations, but be aware, be aware that she's also, she's also part-time, four-H secretary for the Texas A&M AgroLeve. So on top of her being in charge of parks and wreck, she's also being part-time-ish pulled to Texas A&M.
Right. It's not that much work for them, right? So you're able to handle it, correct?
For much work for her.
They rented and...
Well, I've been, I, I feel that I've been doing good. I mean, I think...
I'm not.
I mean, yeah.
I'm just asking you, you handled it, right? No problems?
Sometimes it gets kind of difficult, Commissioner, but yes, I'm doing my best. Yes.
Because if we take one away from you, then you're going to have that much work with the extension office. And then we're going to arrange a problem, we have to put you part-time because it's only half of the house. Because the extension doesn't pay for it, if you count that. If, if the extension would pay for you, there'd be no problem because they're handling your , your, yourself. But if they don't, then we need to make sure, see, that's the problem. I'm going to say, it's you, but a lot of the people that are in, that's where the problem starts, that they don't have enough work. And did you see them writing around? That's why I'm, I'm, I'm asking you, if you can handle it, fine.
As of now, I've been, as of now, I've been doing my job, I mean...
It's not, I'm just saying, you can handle it. You can handle it, right?
I think what he's, what he's trying to, it's not saying that you're not doing your job. He's just making you aware that one person as yourself is able to do that work. And literally, they need a part-time, or something like that. But he's not saying that you're not doing your job. It's just trying to explain that you're doing a good job, but it's, it's a headache.
It's my responsibility, so yes, I'm doing it.
That's, that's what he's trying to say. Nothing negative about you. And we speak a certain way, ladies want to translate. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
Judge, and you can put everything on the agenda for discussing this in session later on, next month or whatever, so we can come to an agreement or follow up.
Judge, Lita's been handling the wreck center and the Bowman for a while now. She's been, she's done a great job. I've told her before, I said, if you have angry constituents or people that call you upset, I said, just tell them, you know what, not for now, we're not going to rent it. Go back, call later. She's coming before certain people, and she's called me a lot of elected officials to, like, oh, you know what, just calm down or call you back. If not, they're not going to use it. We don't have to rent it out to everybody. But if they're going to be that way for one person, everybody's going to be, all of them is going to use it. That's it. So if they can't, if they can't get them all, then... Thank you, Lita, for your good evening.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Ms. Puente.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. 2.5, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report, Constable Precinct 2. Again, my office was advised that Constable Aramuna is in training, so I'll entertain a motion to table. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Dulugava seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
2.6, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from Constable Precinct 3, Mr. Robert Baldenas and Rudy Lopez for the month of March 2023.
Morning.
Morning.
So move.
Motion by Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Dugukawa. Is there any discussion?
You've been busy, sir. Been a busy day. Good work.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Two point seven, Discussion and Appropriate Action Monthly Report from Constable Precinct One, Mr. Alfred Castaneda, he did contact our office and he's currently in active shooter training, so entertain a motion to table by Commissioner Dugukawa, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Two point eight, Discussion and Appropriate Action Monthly Report from Constable Precinct Four, Mr. Jose Gavon. I'm going to recall this item. Mr. Gavon did advise our office that he is going to be here. He had to do services for a veteran for a funeral, and he didn't want to be here present before the court, so I'm going to recall this agenda item. Discussion, same thing for two point nine, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Approval of Travel for Mr. Gavon. Two point one zero, Discussion and Appropriate Action Regarding Monthly Report from Victory Ambulance for the Months of February and March.
Good morning, everyone. I have two reports, one for February, one for March. Let's see, in February, we had a total of 277 runs. We had zero cancel calls, 67 emergencies, 18 refusals, 45 transfers, 20 helipads, eight discharges, 45 dialysis, 20 doctor's appointments, 40 home cares, 12 MBAs, and two DOVs. And for March, we had a total of 352 runs. We had zero cancel calls, we had 84 emergencies, 28 refusals, 48 transfers, 14 helipads, 11 discharges, 81 dialysis, 12 doctor's appointments, six, sorry, 68 home cares, four, four motor vehicle accidents, and two DOVs.
Are all of you just working?
Yes, finally, all four of them are open running, and we're actually working on getting another one going, so, yes, sir. I'm excited to say we finally got everything.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
How many crews do you actually have?
I have two 24-hour.
How many crews?
On the weekend, two 24-hour trucks. Yes, sir. And during the week, I have two 24-hour trucks and one 12-hour truck.
I'll entertain a motion, give me one second. It's okay. Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dugukawa. Discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Carmona.
Discussion.
Discussion.
I was just wondering on your.
On your cruise, is that exclusive?
I know sometimes you all call Crystal City, but.
We do, yes, sir, because we have a mutual agreement.
One call was, I think, that makes sense that there were only once a call this past week, first of, and the other call there to wait over, so we're here for that. I want to make sure that this coverage.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. They are on a call at the hospital, or they're getting, going to the hospital, and the truck is busy because the other one may be out, and it may be on the tractor, maybe on another call, it may be out, you know, busy, but there is the, the one truck all the time in the county, and then we have to, like I said, the two 24-hour crews on the weekends, two 24-hour crews during the week, Monday, Monday through Friday, and one 12-hour truck Monday through Friday.
Any other questions, discussion?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms.
Yes, thank you.
Two point, I'm going to recall, two point eight, Discussion and Appropriate Action Monthly Report from Constable Precinct Four, Mr. Gavon, for the month of March 2023.
Morning, Judge.
Mornings, Your Honor. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. Any discussion?
Judge, the other day, I was pulled over, and I would like to thank Mr. Gavon. I, I had an emergency, one of our tractor was messing up big time, and I was doing 70 on a 55, and I realized it was thinking of my worker, so he pulled me over, and I thank him for then advising me that I was overspeeding, and I said, you know, you're right. But I don't know, if an emergency comes, I am. And thank you, sir, for giving me a warning.
Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion? Well, I think it, it's a reflection of Mr. Gavon. I thank you because none of us are above the law, and we are all held to the same accountability as any other constituent. So it shows your, your integrity and how you work as a constable, so thank you, but also thank you for giving him a warning and not a citation. And for the record, I advise you as an attorney to plead the fifth next time, don't let nobody know you were speeding.
Yeah, I thought he was a poor piece, he was very courteous and everything else, so.
That's good.
He means a lot.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And two point nine, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Approval of Travel for Constable Gavon to Attend CIT Training, March 27th through the 31st in Eagle Pass, Texas. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any discussion?
Mr. Gavon, you didn't put for your meals.
The school wasn't, people were mental or retarded.
But you didn't put for your meals.
I didn't put what?
For your meals. Your lunch, my lunch.
Oh, well, I was going to pass, and then.
But still, you did.
Oh, family.
Yes, if you can go ahead and have that corrected, Constable, just to include the meals or not given my staff, Ms. Ernandez, and she'll assist you so that we can submit the proper paperwork to the auditors.
Okay. Are you going in the patrol car?
Yes, sir.
The meals are in their commission.
Oh, they are. Please. I'm going to leave my job.
Yes, up here, it says meals five for the day. Everything else, everything else is blank because he's using the county car.
Okay, sorry, Judge.
So you're fine, Constable, you don't have to fix it. Any other discussion?
Judge, if we can sign this travel request.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Two point one two, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Accept Donation for Pellet, Grill, and Seafood Boiler Cooker from Great Oil and Gas for the Dimmitt County Fire Department. Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dugukawa. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Two point one three, Discussion and Appropriate Action to Transfer Jail Maintenance, Precinct Two to County Judge. Motion. Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dugukawa. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Judge, please skip one. Two eleven.
Judge, you skip two eleven.
Okay, thank you so much. Two point eleven, Approval of County Airport Orderly Report for January, February, and March of 2023. I apologize. How are you, Mr. Martinez?
Good.
Good.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dugukawa. Any discussion?
Mr. Martinez, are those landings in charge for them to land there?
Yes, sir. We do, pardon.
So how much are you charging?
It just depends on the aircraft, it brings it from anywhere from 25 all the way to 150.
Okay.
It's not how heavy the aircraft is.
All right. Ask the judge, are you, or do you advise you'll next step to down? Also, most, did they belong to the county or?
I don't know who they belong to. I'm not too sure. I called the text out to find out, they didn't get back to me yet, but they, they've been there for several years, there's never been an issue before until one, one pilot mentioned it, but they did contact someone, and it does pass the slope, it's, it's an invisible slope, and it does, you know, there's nothing to do. I asked other pilots too, and they said they didn't have any calls with it. They just advised me, maybe they could put some lights or some markers on the lines where they want to have it.
Right, but what I'm asking, it's not the text, it's the I and B, right?
I'm pretty sure it is.
And if we, or, but, like you said, it's not a real big problem, but it's something that's, they already, they already advised, and so I suggest.
Especially at nine yards, I know that one's going towards Cleveland Hill. They're probably like a quarter mile away, a little bit more.
So my suggestion would be judge, if we can contact I and B, and then if we pilot it, they can install it. Just the red one, right?
Yes.
Any other discussion?
Better to be prepared.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Two point one four, Discussion and Appropriate Action to Hire Two Full-Time Employees for Positions Available for Precinct Three and Six. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dugukawa. Any discussion?
Judge, these two positions are the ones for the public facilities, I had some, but apparently, they said it was too much work, and I didn't have paid, so they quit. So I rehired two people.
So these positions have already been fulfilled? Like you already have somebody already working?
For this one?
Yes.
I'm sorry, yes, ma'am, this is effective for April, this week, the first April of April. Sorry.
Fourth?
Yes, ma'am.
April four.
I was going to put that on there, and I.
That's the fourth, not the first, I'm sorry.
No, the first, I haven't hired anybody.
Okay. So the motion is to hire two full-time employee positions available for Precinct Three and Six, expected April 4th, 2023?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Two point one five, Discussion and Appropriate Action to Hire Two Part-Time Employees for Positions Available at Three and Six. Motion by Commissioner Dugukawa. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carmona, Alonso Carmona. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Two point one six, Appropriate Action and Discussion Review and Approve Flexile Systems Internet Service Contract. Motion by Commissioner Dugukawa.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. Any discussion?
Judge, these people, I know they're not on the pitch yet, but he's going to come out and check our systems.
Is this with Phil?
Uh-huh, and then he's going to let us know his recommendation, and then we are going to enter into contract. This is just a, a part-time contract where they're going to see what we have and advise us what we need to do. After that, we'll, we'll put it out for days, and we'll ask them to, to put it out.
Okay. This is with Phil, correct? I think I'm supposed to meet with him sometime next week. Commissioner Dugukawa? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Discussion and Appropriate Action, Approval of Addendum Number Seven, Non-Exclusive License Service Agreement between Dimmitt County and LGS. I'll entertain a motion?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, second by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Discussion?
Judge and Commissioner, this is to allow me to add one more of my staff members to have access. And on that same note, I may add, I, I think you need one in your office, or you already have one?
I believe that I have one already. Correct? Ms. Ernandez, right? The one that he's going to add, they're going to take it and add it, release it to it. Yes.
Okay.
Any other discussion? So essentially, this is to authorize you to employ one more LGS user, correct? Or to get one more user?
One of my staff members to have access to LGS.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Two point one eight, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Approval for Dimmitt County Judge to Attend the Texas Emergency Management Conference, May 29th through the 2nd in Fort Worth, Texas. Motion by Commissioner Dugukawa, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Two point one nine, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Approval for Dimmitt County Judge to Attend the TAC Legislative Conference in August in Austin, Texas. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Dugukawa. Second by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Two point two zero, Purchase, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Purchase Labor Log Posters for All Departments as Required by Texas Workforce Commission from the Professional Service Account. I'll entertain a motion?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dugukawa. Any discussion?
Wait, do you need permission, Mr. Martinez, who's always just by and give it to us?
I was asking permission because I wasn't too sure on where we can purchase these posters, like what account out of, because in my opinion, since this is, this wasn't a, I mean, I, not that I know, it was a budget expense for all the departments, I don't, for me, I don't think it's fair to ask them to buy it in the middle of the budget or when they weren't expecting, so that's why I had asked if we could purchase it through this account for everybody in the county.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Ramadines. 2.21 Discussion and Appropriate Action, Amend Personal Policy to Accurately Reflect Retirement Contribution As Per TCDRS 23 Plan Agreement. I'll entertain a motion? Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Juan Carmona, second? Any discussion?
Question. But, but when are we gonna have those policy reports?
For, like hard copies or?
Employees.
They're on the county website right now. If you go to my department on the website, there's a link to it and it's.
But remember, there were some that don't have computers.
They can come by my office and pick one up. And then for this retirement, it's, um, so when I read the policy, I thought the retirement portion accurately reflected our contribution, but it turns out it doesn't. And it's since 2015, it said that it reflects a $2.50 contribution for every dollar the employee puts in, but that hasn't been the case. It's the current agreement, I think I attached it with yours. Basically, it's only $1.90 for every dollar that the employee puts in, but I'm just requesting to change the wording to accurately reflect what the county applies.
But you're gonna leave it at two, two in a month then, right?
No, that's not what was agreed upon.
But now, if we make a new agreement, it'll be there, right?
If you make a new agreement, but this agreement that I attached was for this year. So it can change on the next year.
Okay, can we get? It's 2.5 right now.
No.
Yes.
We put 7% and the county puts 13.25%.
It's matched, for every dollar is 2 and 1/2.
When I did the numbers, it's only for every dollar, the county puts $1.90.
And if you look at the plan, it says 2.5.
But you're, what you're saying is that we're supposed to be putting 2.5, right? Oscar?
We're supposed to, but we don't. It's only agreed to put 13.25%.
Okay, but it's two.
You're, essentially, you're correct, yes. You're correct, Mr. Ramadines. What he's trying to say is that you guys agreed to do it at 2.5, but right now, the county's only putting 1.91 is what he said, what you're saying, right?
What I'm saying is, um, when you do the numbers for, like when you break it down, for every dollar the employee puts in, the county puts $1.90. And on the agreement, it says 7% goes to retirement and then the county puts 13.25%. But that, though, that isn't consistent with $2.50 for every dollar.
So, so it's in writing, they just have it in the, is that what it's? In other words?
That's how I take it.
In other words, it's in writing that we're, the county's, we put in the amount?
Well, in the policy, it says one thing, but the service, the TCDRS service agreement, it's, it's conflicting with each other. That's one thing. So I'm asking to amend the policy to reflect what's in there.
It says 2 and 1/2, 250%.
So, so essentially, the agreement is that Demet County will pay 250?
250% for every, whatever the employee answers.
Yes, 250, but the policy says $1.90. So he's trying to just correct it so it reflects this paper he's showing you.
This is correct, this is what we have.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying, because when you look at the retirement, I don't know if y'all will tell it if, on my math, last monthly report for when I did show the TCDRS contributions. So if you look at what the employee put in and then what you, what the county put in, it's not $2.50 for every dollar.
Excuse me?
The math doesn't matter.
The math doesn't matter. But it, it reflects 13.25%, but not 250%.
So we're seeing right now 250?
No.
190?
Basically, dollar wise, it's 190.
So you just want to.
But that is, but that is 250%?
Because if it was, if, if the employee puts a dollar and the county puts $1.90, that's 190%. If it was 250%, it would be 250, but that's not what gets, that's not what gets put in.
We verify, it's supposed to be 250, not 250.
Put LGS in, why not do that? Put in the agenda, get together with the judge, Mr. Pedera, and explain to her what we're doing so that when we can move over.
So I'll entertain a motion to amend a motion to table this item so that we can sit down and discuss it beyond the same page and we will put it on the next agenda. So I'll entertain a motion that we table this item. Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.1 Discussion and Appropriate Action, Approval to Purchase Leeds Online Real-Time Crime Package Pro-Rated Service from 4:15 to 9:30, 23 for $4,864.
Good morning, Commissioners. The Leeds online was something we already had in the previous years, which is, it expired on us. It's an investigative tool without saying too much.
Motion approved.
Motion by Commissioner Urenda, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any discussion? All in favor? Yes, sir.
When, when did it expire?
We haven't had it for about a year.
So, what we, we always get these after the bag. Who's in charge of taking care of the big one?
Well, there's, with the previous changes that have happened, there's been a lot of movement and that Leeds right there, I'm not, you know, at the time, there was a supervisor for that division and since then, there has not been a supervisor in that division. So it was not the investigator's position to be doing that, so.
I understand that. You have secretaries there afterward to look at whatever you need to bring up, take this eye over here without taking notice, you know?
Not so much taking notice, but if.
Oh, to do it on the agenda to be.
Right. It's just something that came up recently that we figured, you know, let's get it back. It's not something that we needed. Like I said, it's just a tool on the belt, so it wasn't something that we looked at to try to get it, you know, renewed immediately. If we could do without it, you know, there wasn't a need for it at the time. This is the reason why we felt now, why not put it back and let's get it back?
And like you said, it wasn't only back then, but now there is. So apparently, you've been using it, so they found out and they cut it off, right?
They didn't cut it off, it just expired on us.
That's what I'm saying.
So what's your question? Other than, I mean, we put it back on the agenda, so.
So what?
Then your question is, why was it let go at that time? I don't have an answer for you.
Okay, well, I, I just see a lot of these that didn't expire or didn't take notice or whatever.
Sure.
And, and you have a lot of secretaries there? You got a few of them running, whatnot, just gotta do the job. You don't need an officer to do the job. That's what I'm saying.
I hear you, I hear you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Discussion and Appropriate Action to Accept a $1,000 Donation from Walmart, 500 for the Demet County Sheriff's Office, and 500 for the Demet County Fire Department.
So this here, just to make it clear, was not a donation, it was a grant.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I applied for this grant last month and they gave us 1,000 with the understanding that we would get 500 to the fire department. So we already received the check, we're just asking for your eyes to allow us to start utilizing those funds.
Motion approved.
Motion by Commissioner Urenda, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any discussion?
I have a question. Because, because the month will be used, is there a particular item to purchase or you guys can use it for anything or what if you?
The sheriff's office, we were gonna utilize it for something for the youth to have an event. They didn't specify for the fire department, they just asked that we give 500.
Well, we were gonna use it for the catering and water.
But in particular, the, the grant doesn't necessarily specify what you have to use it on. It was just in general, yes, yeah. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Discussion and Appropriate Action, Jail Status and Sheriff's Report.
Give it again.
Joe, not here.
Well, Ms. Montes had to go on a transport to San Antonio. We needed a female to pick up. But I have, was.
Want you to table the jail.
Are you doing the jail report?
Yes.
She's written, doing, she's by proxy for the jail report.
Is that Frank?
Yes, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion? Jail Status and Sheriff's Report. Thank you.
Judge, once again, I would like to table this item because if we have questions for the administrator, she can answer them. In the next meeting.
Is there a second?
Sir.
Discussion?
Judge, it's been, it's been reaffirmed, whenever one of the administrators is not here, then the item has to be here. Unless you wanna change it, then.
I wanna change it because if she's able to answer the questions and I would like to hear it so that we don't have to make our other agendas longer, but is she able to answer questions if she has, they have questions? Is she, that she's a assistant or what is she?
She, so she runs the billing of the car, so she has information on questions that you all would have as far as equipment and stuff like that. She's the one who actually does all the research for it, so she probably has more detailed information unless you have other questions in regards to inmate numbers.
Well, there's a. There's a motion to table the jail. Is there any other discussion? I'll, everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition?
Wait, what are we doing with table?
Tableing the jail status report to wait for Mrs. Montes?
She talked about.
What, there's three?
That's what I was saying, Commissioner. We're, we're doing a lot of things and, and we had a policy saying that somebody had to be here to give the, or the administrator.
I didn't, I wasn't aware of the policy. I just, I just figured she was.
It's anybody else.
That's why we table the other items, whenever the judges are not here, they got a proxy, which is their secretaries, yeah, we table it, correct?
Yes.
So, but like I said, if you all want to change it, that's fine. I don't have a problem, but we need to do it for everybody.
You're correct, and everybody, you guys voted that we're gonna table it, so we're tabling it. The sheriff's report, status?
Any questions on the report? I think maybe arising citations. I have no answers as far as the co-compliance, we still have not had any advocates for that. We're, I was proposing maybe that go back to the judge's office or the commissioner's co-compliance position. We just can't seem to fill it.
And that, oh, sorry.
On, we're on discussion.
I apologize.
And that one, Mr. Martinez, I was asking the judge, maybe we can do a parks, department where we can have park officers just for that.
Agreed.
And just gonna try and get them for us.
I would agree and that, that position would be perfect.
Recreation on the parks, so it'd be a lot easier for you all that way we get somebody that we, that we can hold out.
Correct. It's all division, maybe under the commissioner's court.
Under the judge's office.
Or judge's office.
Right.
I would agree.
Any other discussion, Commissioner? Commissioners, any other discussion?
Sir, on your scalp equal is hot. I know that they're probably, you're talking about illegal activity.
Yes, any type of, any type of illegal activity that they're tied to it in some way.
So what happens to them, the GSI or?
Usually, if we have nothing other than a citation, most of them don't have driver's license, so we will arrest for an ODL kind of, but that's more important for the bigger investigation. We tie the organization together, so we need to identify them in that manner.
I just couldn't, like, smell it.
Just to discuss, any love of the camera at the Katarina Park? Did it catch anything?
I'm not sure, I had investigator, I was heading out there to check the camera for that.
Okay. That was also advised, there was an incident on Sunday, I don't even know, on the ATV, so I know either the ambulance was called out there or either.
No, it's, here in town where, Katarina, okay.
So maybe that it could be the same.
I understand. Okay, yeah, I still have to get an actual, I'll let you know. We'll get you something today, Commissioner. We'll find out.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. 4.1 Discussion and Appropriate Action, Status Report. Good morning, Mr. Hyman.
Since evening, we developed a contract where they're currently working on the, on the 40. They have a generator that's running right now to, for their planning purposes and their commission will request the final city code inspection on what he has completed on all his connections. And they asked about parking lot and the landscape.
I thought we had agreed that we were gonna pay for them to landscape, but that's what we set the last agenda. Correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioners, but I believe when we have Frontera here.
I don't wanna start, so they get through there, out of there. They got those vehicles, they got those forklifts and everything else, they're just gonna mess it up?
No, you understand, but he's, he's saying that Frontera is asking him about, but my understanding was that we had already approved that they were gonna do it, correct?
No, no, we're done.
The county?
Yeah.
But if they wanna do it, I'm over it.
So, yeah. So my question is in regards to the electricity, because I know that I was contacted by Mr. O'Heda from CSA. Did they not connect the electricity, the Frontera?
They, they were, they're not, AEP is not gonna connect until they finish everything. No, they, what they were requesting, I contacted AEP and I contacted Frontera, what they were trying to request was a temporary meter so that they could temporarily run the electricity in building for AC purposes and lack.
Correct.
The, the going forward, they're not, they're not given the, the permit to go ahead and open it since they haven't completed the entire project on the electrical side. So Frontera contacted their commission, what they did was install a generator to be able to run the building temporarily. When they complete all their electrical project, they will submit for a final inspection at that moment and then AEP will come in.
So right now, they're running off a generator? And have they advised you, Mr. Hyman, as to the completion date? Because they told us here last time it was gonna be this week.
They told you this morning that there will probably be through, but the new legal agreement.
In its entirety? Not to include landscaping? I don't think so, because remember that Mr. Cazada was supposed to get the whole punch, it was like two weeks before?
When is Cazada supposed to come in?
He said Friday to do the final inspection. Make sure they give you a patch, so you were aware of what they didn't do, everything else, that we were, we were aware of as a part of it.
Any other discussion?
I'm not ordering you on, I'm such a, I'm sorry.
I'll entertain a motion?
No.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Any other discussion?
Judge?
Yes, sir.
We haven't hit our, well, no, I'll, Commissioner, I think you're wrong.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Grants and Planning: Discussion and Appropriate Action: Status Report.
For the, for the month of March, I applied for Operation Stone Garden. That's coincided with D P S. I'm also in the process of applying for the U S T A grant for tennis fields for a project that the judge has in the further in the year for the sports complex, as well as the U S D A FEMA grant for security cameras for the courthouse. And we're in the process of setting up a meeting so that we can get together with the judges so we can see who needs what through O L S.
And we do anticipate on, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Urenda, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Any discussion? We do anticipate on applying this time around for O L S, correct? And have you been able to get everybody that needs to be on board for O L S? For the most part, yes.
Judge, no, Christine is not with the...
I was going to make that comment. And just to put on the record for the Commissioners' advisement, Christine Guerrero, who is no longer, is no longer with the county, we do, and I do anticipate on having that position open right now. Selena is going to carry a little bit of that load. One of the things that we were trying to get in regards to a grant that Commissioner Juan Carmona had talked to me about, which I think is a great grant, is to try to get the U S D A to come build houses for the elderly and for the underprivileged. That was something that we wanted to try to do before the end of the year. So we're going to try to work on that. There are certain grants that we're trying to prioritize, and that was one of them. I did talk to Christine over the weekend, and she advised me that she did not have an opportunity to meet with the grants administration for that. However, I am getting with Selena to make that one of her priorities so that we can try to help the elderly in our community and the underprivileged in Dimmitt County in general. The last time that I called them, I think we have through July, if I'm mistaken, to apply for that grant. So we're trying to work really hard to get that. I know La Salle County has that, so we're trying to get that here back to Dimmitt County. So I'm trying to see if I can get that position filled so that we can have the actual grants and planning up to date in terms of getting more grants for our county.
If I may tell you also, I had mentioned to Christine, the U S D A, I went to one of the trainings there in New Orleans, and they had a grant for the, anybody could apply that qualified for $10,000. They would save free, no cost, for any repairs that they wanted to do on their house. So I don't know if this grant is still active. I was asking her time, not time, I pretend, but every now and then, that grant, she had applied.
Unfortunately, that... Yeah, and I apologize that you never got an answer, but unfortunately, as of last Thursday, I met with them, and there hasn't been no application in regards to that grant. However, like I mentioned, we are trying to work zealously to try to get that grant. I will say that I meet with them at least once a month to go over a list of grants that we're trying to apply, and that in conjunction with trying to get O L S back reinstated to Dimmitt County has been one of our priorities. So we are working on that in regards to the emergency management. I'll be the contact, point of contact for right now in terms of emergency management. So any other discussion?
Judge, I think if this is right, if they will get a hold of David, maybe he can apply for that grant, because he's in charge of the C S A that's for weatherization and everything.
Correct.
If there's a grant out there that he's not aware of, maybe like a fire on the most.
Well, we're working with him. Fortunately, we have Ms. Edmanis in my office, who worked before with Mr. O'Hara as his executive secretary, and I've talked to Mr. O'Hara, and what essentially they hope is with matching, but we got to apply for the grant first, and that's, that's the only.
Matching is always a match.
So that's kind of where, where we're at. Anybody else?
That's what I spoke about, is there's no matching, just straight up.
Just the $10,000?
Yes.
Judge, it's like La Salle County, they only $10,000 that they give them, and then they'll use it when any homes, they need additional funding.
I can hear you.
She's saying that in La Salle County, they do what you just said, the $10,000, and then they look for communities that need assistance to renovate the home, essentially. But if you have that information, I'd be happy to take that, if you can get that to us. Anybody else? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Motion carries. Executive session, there's not any items that we need to discuss in executive session? I am, you're correct, I'm sorry. 6.1 Claim Docket.
There's a correction, there was a correction for the...
I believe your staff brought us a new...
Right, and so that is reflected on this front sheet.
I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Urenda, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rulukawa. Any discussion? I'm going to go ahead and call out the numbers. General fund is $386,492.17. Dimmitt County Airport, $42.15. Golf course is $8,230.26. Courthouse security, $1,565.98. Records management, $1,081.21. Utility is $38,426.74. Equitable sharing forfeiture, $37,384. Stone Garden, $29,212.96. C T V Techs dot infrastructure, $3,000. Dimmitt County payroll, $373,158.27. C O's 2018 is $199,526.69. C O's 2019, $199,365.53. C O's 2021, $4,500. A grand total of $1,281.985.96. We already did, it moved, it's just for discussion. Commissioner Urenda and Commissioner Rulukawa? Yes.
Discussion?
Any other discussion?
Mr. Pela, this gentleman, since we aren't financial, we're likely to put on a different item as day. Does he tell you how much he receives or spends all their...
Yes, and in fact, he has to submit a month of reports to us before we can pay him his, his payment.
But we should have asked him, because we never had seen our report like that, and this way advise him to go ahead and give us our report about how much money he got in, how much money is going out, correct?
Yes, would you present it to us?
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Now I entertain a motion to adjourn recess. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Second by Commissioner Urenda. All in favor? The time is 11:21, and I'm calling the meeting to order for the public facilities. Approval of minutes of regular meeting, March 27, 2023. Motion by Commissioner Rulukawa. Second by Commissioner Urenda. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. 2.1 Discussion and Appropriate Action: New Business. New business, Commissioner? Or public facilities? On public, on public facilities, do you have any new business?
Oh, here, just the, up to date, Your Honor, we have been maintaining with the electrical and plumbing. Just this week, Ellen Plumbing came to fix those toilets, well, the... The toilet, and... And the reason I'm bringing this up, because sometimes I tend to do the work and then eventually the dynamic that be on, so, you know, we got to train it out, so now we know where we're at. Just on that one.
I didn't have a good talking.
Of course. One of the things I was going to mention is, basically, when he does, or anybody, that's includes the Sheriff's Department, when they have an emergency P O, and it happens, especially the sheriff's office, which happens after hours, to go ahead and take care of it if it's an emergency, and then come back at the first available time and get the P O done as an emergency P O. So that we don't have catastrophe, and we don't have to wait to get the P O to do the work.
Also, Judge, I'm having a hard time finding a window that's fully proof. Nobody seems to be able to carry it out here. I call San Antonio, and they don't have anybody to come install them or make them. So if you get a call from New York, that's the whole I have. I don't have, I can't find anybody. I call all the local, that's the starters, everybody can find one.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Claim Docket. Public safety, $5,447.39. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Rulukawa, second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any discussion? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to recess and adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Rulukawa, second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you. This meeting has ended.